Okay, we'll get started. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for May 28th, 2024. Please rise for the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have a few items to cover before we get started. Apply, please sign in at the door if you have not done so already. There you'll find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we will follow tonight. If you wish to take one, please do. Please put any electronic devices on silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record tonight. Members at a planning commission are appointed by the county board of commissioners with one member from each of the five commissioner districts. Land service staff is here to assist the planning commission with its duties. The task at a planning commission is to hold the public hearing and to make a recommendation at a county board of commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of approving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There's a protocol, protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, state their name and address for the record and give their testimony. And that's the podium right there by the door. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. All testimony is complete, after all testimony is complete, I will close the public hearing portion of this process. The planning commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of our finding of fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We'll have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made. Then we'll have our final motion to recommend approval or denial to the county board of commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The county board of commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. Okay, and on the planning and zoning tonight, we have two agenda items. And the first one is Kevin and Lisa Smoothie. Three, four, three, five, three, 213th Street Hillman. Application to expand an existing interim use permit to allow for processing of farm animals located in the point of northwest quarter, section one, township forty-one, range twenty-nine, Granite Township. If the applicants, please come up front here and sit. And then state your name for the record, please, when you get seated.
Name is Kevin Smoothie.
Okay, Kevin. So I guess at this time, Darren, you ready with the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is to expand an existing home extended business located in section one of Granite Township. Section six oh four point eight of the Morse County Land Use Ordinance requires an interim use permit for home extended businesses. Section five oh six point eight requires an amended IUP for the intensification of the use permitted by the IUP. Section twelve eleven point three contains the performance standards for home extended businesses. So this is the plat drawing and then the red dot showing the location for Granite Township. The application that was submitted. The questions answered by the applicant. The site plan added by the, submitted by the applicant. As you can see, the addition is located on the north and east side. So this is an aerial view of the property. The area in red, if you can kind of see, would be the location of the butcher shop. So this is the current butcher shop. Again, another view, the area with the red area to the north and to the west of the parcel number is location. So the applicant owns and lives on this thirty point three acre parcel in section one, Granite Township. The parcel is serviced by 213th Street, which is a paved county highway, also known as County Highway forty-seven. The applicant purchased the property in May of 2012 and the applicant was granted an IUP for a home extended business specifically for deboning and cutting of venison during the deer hunting season on December tenth, 2020. The applicant proposes to expand the existing home extended business into a year-round business to provide processing farm animals. So a phased expansion is planned to include the following. Phase one, processing of farm animals slaughtered on-site with the, within the existing building. Phase two is the construction of a twenty-eight by twenty-four foot addition to the existing building to include animal holding pens, onslaught slaughter floor, and additional cooler and freezer space. And then phase three is the installation of a smokehouse and a sausage kitchen within the expanded building. Long-term animal holding will not occur. The estimated maximum animal holding would be one day. These are the performance standards from the land use ordinance for the IUP. And then again, additional requirements. The applicant is currently working with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture on expanding the license to do this. So this is exhibit two here, figure two, is showing the email between Department of Ag and Amy regarding their permitting process. A larger holding tank will be placed to handle the additional wastewater. There's not, there will not be retail outlet within, within the store hours or a customer stream and no employees are proposed at this time. Carcasses disposal is accomplished by hauling to the Morrison County Solid Waste Facility. The surrounding land use consists of cropland, wetland, woodland, and rural homestead property. The nearest residence is approximately a half mile away. Bookable comprehensive plan goals is just ag, ensure the county provides and protects areas suitable for strong agricultural industry, including limited crop production, animal husbandry, dairy and meat production, pasture lands and similar uses. And then goal eight two, I won't read that all, but that was in part of your staff report and objective one as well. Local economic development, goal C one with objective one. Objective eight, and then C two, and of the objective one. I think, you know, objective eight, seek opportunities to encourage, support local entrepreneurs in their efforts to create and expand their businesses where appropriate. Objectives two, seven, and nineteen as well. But mitigating commercial and industrial uses to adjacent lands. These are some suggested conditions. These are quite lengthy as well. They're in just part of your staff report, I believe. If not, we can certainly read through these in greater detail. Sixteen notices were sent. No comment was received prior to the public hearing. And these are your questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Mr. Smoothie, you have anything to add? Is that correct or?
Yeah, that sounds.
Okay, you have anything to add to that or maybe just give us a background or kind of where you came to this point? To why you want to change and, or add, I should say, add.
I've been processing deer for, what, three years now? And then I worked for a local meat market down the road. And then after that deer season, we kind of started talking. I was talking to a lot of other farmers and stuff and they were saying that the shortage of slaughter capabilities that they have. So I kind of started talking with me and my wife and we kind of pushed for this direction more because of the need. And then working with the state inspectors, we're working with them. On January thirty-first, came to my facility, walked around, did a walk-through, and then kind of listened to him and see his thoughts about it and then kind of proceeded after that, so.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions for our applicant or staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
How many total employees?
It's just me personally right now. It's in a stage of growth, so it wouldn't be a maximum of five. If, if anything, it'll be maybe one, maybe two tops for now. And it just depends on growth. I just, I don't know. I only want to exceed so much. I don't want to exceed over that. So if we get to that point, that's kind of why I want to stop, so.
What can you take on from a processing perspective on a daily basis? Are you doing an animal a day or what's the?
It's just me personally. I probably do maybe one or two animals a day by myself, probably. Just depending on the size, if it's beef or pigs or in that nature. If I had more people, then I could probably take on more, but that's probably the max is, is that for, for myself.
Gotcha. When you were talking to farmers and you were getting an idea for demand or, or even requests coming in, how many, how many animals do you think you would do in a year?
Like I said, it's like when it's your first new business starting out, you don't really know. But just from the people I've been talking to, I feel like I've been, I'll be very fairly busy. It's just like, just getting started though, you just know, never know, you know what I mean? I mean, a lot of people talk and stuff, but it just, you never know what you're going to take in until you have it. But I want to get to the capability where if it's just myself or whatever, I want to get it to here and then kind of set my goals after that, paying on my schedule, so.
Got it. Thank you. That's it. Sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, George.
Mr. Smoothie, what, what's the timeline? I see you got three phases and how are you looking, how soon you looking at getting up and running?
I'd, I'd like to be up and running by this fall. I'm trying to work and kind of do as I go. I'm not trying to take on a massive loan on it. So I'm just trying to, I'm hoping by fall time, but if not, it's going to be probably next spring is my guessing is, so. But it just depends on what I can get done and how much money I can accumulate.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Marv.
Mr. Chair. First, I see that you are disposing carcasses at a landfill of solid waste. I don't know, did you consider a lot of other butchering plants? They have long prairie rendering come and pick up and rather than hauling and filling up our landfill, did you take that in consideration?
Yeah, that's, we talked to the rendering service. They kind of go down that road by my house because they stop at another local meat market. So they said it wouldn't be much of an issue for them. It's just that one getting started. I am going to make sure that I have my cooling down for my coolers so I can cool them and then probably dispose and make sure there's no smell. And that's kind of what we talked with the inspectors, so.
Okay. I see that you kind of guessed at additional traffic. What was that, five to six vehicles a week from what you have?
They would be tops. Especially when it first started, it would be a lot less, but as I get on more, it just depends on when people drop animals off and stuff like that. So probably a maximum is five.
Okay. Did you hear anything back from, what is it, Department of Ag on licensing, where that's at here?
Well, right now, I'm actually licensed, custom licensed right now. And I'm talking to the inspector right now and he goes, as long as you get your cooler set up for disposing of the waste and then getting your holding tank setting, you can do farm butchers as of right now. And he's, and that's what he says. I've seen smaller facilities do a lot, lot more than what you're thinking right now. It just includes of animals and stuff, but right now, just it'd be starting of the, until I get them, other things done. I have to make sure all the things are in play before I can start.
Okay. So did you read through the suggested conditions here? And, and are you okay with them? Because I think we need, need to follow them. That's on the last page.
Back cover.
Back cover.
Oh, okay. And Darren, Darren, did you put? Oh, this isn't the one. Forget it.
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay, I think we need to adopt them here, so at this point, I have no more questions, so thank you.
Brent, did you have anything?
Yeah, a couple, just a couple of follow-up questions. You need to increase the size of that, that tank. What is it now and what, what will it need to be in the future?
Right now, it's just a five hundred gallon tank and, and just for deer season, it's got to pumped it out with, you know, using oils and septic. But as of, if we get bigger, it's based on gallons per day. And my guessing is we in the, if we were busy, it's going to be at least in the five hundred gallons a day. So it would be a fairly sizable tank. It's going to be probably like twenty-five hundred gallons at least.
Okay. And you kind of answered the question here, but I know in 2020, when you came in for the deer processing, several of us were here and you indicated that there was no desire to process anything but venison. And now you're back, so one of two things occurred. One, business is good and you're looking to increase your business as an entrepreneur and provide a service that's needed to the area. Or, or two, you had no idea that this is where it was going to go, or maybe both.
Yeah, I had, I had no idea this direction was going to go, especially the people I've talked to in this last year. I wasn't even dream of thinking about expanding to this where I'm at now. And this, this last year really kind of pushed me to take the next step. So I had no, no qualms about doing it when I first started at all. So this is definitely a kind of new light I'm looking at it.
And this is supplemental to your regular employment, so it's something you do on your free time? You work elsewhere?
Right now, I work for like Scott Apke, just for driving truck and stuff like that. And I just do kind of little side work and stuff. That's kind of what I have going on. But as the business kind of more expands, I think I'm going to cut back. So it just depends on kind of how fast this is going to work or how busy it's going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess I don't have too many questions. One of them is, like, how many and how big a cooler? What are you going to have for like storage of the meat?
So storage, they have to be like, they call it a wet cooler and a dry cooler. We're proposing to do hang of my halves. And it's depending on how many, like three foot space and animals that you can put in there. It's based on probably a maximum of twenty animals is what kind of what we're shooting for at one time. So in the cooler.
Okay, so it's a good size.
Yeah, it's going to be a good size. And then I have to increase my freezer capacity right now because my freezer's only, I think it's like a six by, or I think it's like an eight by, eight by eight, or eight by eight, I think, right now is my freezer and I have to expand because it's definitely not big enough.
Yep. And then you still going to be doing processing deer also?
Yes.
And then what, what's the requirements? Is there any requirements? I'm not a genius on this, but I thought I heard some places that you got to do something special to do both. Is there something to that or no?
I'm just, you know, making sure that you bone, make sure the carcasses are properly, take it to Little Falls landfill because it's that chronic waste and, you know, to make it sure you're doing your comics for your inspection, making sure that the health codes are followed and.
Okay. And then, so we talked about, Marv brought up the conditions. One of them is our end date and you're fine with keeping that. I believe that was the original. Your IUP is when you no longer own the property. That fine to continue with that?
Yeah, that's fine to continue with that.
Okay. And then maybe explain a little bit to us about your live animal. You know, when you, if you get to that tier and you're going to have animal housing or you're going to slaughter at your facility, maybe explain that a little bit.
So when the farmer or person brings the animal in, we're just kind of loading them into the, shoots into the pens. And then my inspector talked about animals escaping and chasing them down and not running on the road and shooting the animals. So kind of a plan to put up a secondary kind of fence around there to help. I mean, we'll be open, obviously, to drop off your animals, but hopefully bring in another kind of a barrier there. And they kind of highly express that across the board. So, and then he said also to have a, a set of like movable panels and stuff like that. So if the animal does escape, he said, that's what we're trying to get away from is making sure that you can do it as humanly as possible, not stressing animal and stuff like that. So like I said, once they come enter the pens, like I said, no more than a day. That we, we don't want, we don't want them in there a long time.
Yep.
You know what I mean? And then once you go into the pen and get into the kill floor and then depending on the demand or the, what they want, it's going to be bolt or rifle usage to render the animal and then getting it to skin and getting it all eviscerated and then get it, getting it hung and cleaned and then getting it into the drip cooler and then marking and tagging them, which is important. And then depending on your wait times, if it's, you know, more of it's like a hamburger cow or something like that versus like a shorter time versus going to a regular cut animal, which you shoot for that ten day mark. And then unless it's a pig or a different animal. And then once you get into there, get your ten days and set up, bring it into the processing room and then process that animal, cut and wrap, making sure that your health codes are followed, make sure it's cleanliness and then getting that proper name and getting it stored properly.
So you're going to have outside pen?
I think it's going to be inside.
Okay.
Yep. I think I have the shoots on the outside and then I'll run them inside the building. They have the pens in there.
Okay, so you have the pen inside and then your kill floor is inside also.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't seen many of them. I see a lot of them with just the alleyway inside the building and they could put two or three in there and that's their kill floor also, but.
But we also visited a couple of butcher shops down by Caledonia, Iowa, down there. And then also by the St. Croix River, we visited a couple of them. It was interesting to see that they used divided pens in between, in between the, the shoots where they store the animals. Just because animals, a lot of times, he said that they'll jump on each other or run or break a leg or whatever, he said. And he has them literally on weights. He just pulls them down by hand. So each animal is kind of individually and that's kind of what I want to do.
Okay.
Just because I've seen the stress that gets put on animals, so I'd like to prefer to keep them separate. So prevent, going in more into prevention thing than anything, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. Very impressed with how well you filled out this criteria questions. I mean, I could use them almost word for word what you did here, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it looks like you put a lot of time and effort into this and got a lot of knowledge built up on it. So you get a lot of advertisement out there. I think you'll be busier than you want to be.
Well, we'll see. Never know.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Just one last question. Do you have an idea how many total deer you've done since 2020?
Probably, probably at least four hundred plus. I'd say even the fives, somewhere in there.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess at this time, we'll open up this portion of the meeting to the public. If there's anybody here that has anything to say for the applicant or against, now's the time, go up to the podium. State your name for the record.
I'm Alan Welly here on behalf of Granite Township Board. We just had a few questions that we came up with at our meeting last week. Some of them have been answered. The holding tank size, the bones and waste, if it's going to Central Bay. The, we were wondering what happens, is the wastewater tank, is it above ground, below ground, and what happens to the water? And I guess the other one we talked about was how does the county go from residential or ag, I guess it's classified, to commercial out in the country? Is that, do you, does the whole thirty acres get deemed as commercial or how do they divide it up?
Okay, I'll usually answer at the end, but you're from the township, so we'll address that right away. So the first one I'll, I'll do. So he's not rezoning anything. It's an ag, so it's just staying there. He's not rezoning anything. He's just applying for a permit that is an ag use, okay? So we have a whole list in our ag ordinance. We have a whole list of ag uses, different things that you can do. You could put a storage unit, them types of things out there. So he's applying for a permit that's an ag use. So what we're looking at tonight is if we're going to allow him to be able to do this home business, okay? That, that's what we're looking at. So we're not, we're not zoning, so nothing's changing on that, okay?
Even with employees, it doesn't change?
No, you could, but he's limited to how many employees he can have.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it can't be some big, it can't be, you know, it's like seven employees. You can't, you can't have, open up and be like JBS or something, you know, can't ever turn into that.
Right.
And then, I don't know, on the, above, I'm sure it's below ground tanks.
That's what the inspector said, is to have it below ground because of the freezing. And he said you'd have so much problems with it, so he told me to go below ground.
Yep. And then you don't want the record, the rules and regulations are on the, you just get a sewer pumper to pump it out or is that what they do?
I think they're, we talked to that Hoys a little bit about kind of tanks and stuff like that. And then we're going to go, depending on flow, it's going to be a weekly or bi-weekly basis that they're pumping that tank because of the amount of usage and water we're using, so.
Yep. Darren, do you have anything to add to that or no? If it's, if it, to me, if it's just a sewer, you know, the sewer company's going to do it, they're going to treat it just like they would human sewage. They're going to treat it and they're going to go disperse it out in a field somewhere is how it's going to be. That's what, unless you know something different.
Yeah, so with these, it's, it's not actually, you know, regulated as sewage because it's not, it's considered more of a wastewater. So you actually work with the state through this process. So the other ones we've done like this have had a similar thing where it's a holding tank in ground and then it's managed like that. Yep.
And that's what they also recommended too, is like you said, they always have a lot of plumbing issues and stuff like that in a lot of butcher shops. And he said, if you're going to size this, make sure you go sizes bigger and make sure it's disinstalled properly with the proper clean notes and everything. He goes, he said, that's all they see time and time again, a lot of butcher shops with the older ones, especially this. They do get some problems, this built up and stuff, and he recommended getting it jet washed at least once a year.
Okay. Does that answer your questions?
Oh, that, yes. And then who, who inspects that? Does the county inspect?
No, the, he's under a lot more scrutiny than the county. The USDA, he has to go through, is it every six months or every year?
Sometimes they go three times a year depending, but it's usually twice a year for sure.
Yep. So yeah, they're a lot more scrutiny than if the county would do it, so. As long as we don't hear, you know, the conditions that we have, if we'd, if we would approve this, we have four conditions. And then there's also some performance standards. In here, there's twelve, twelve performance standards that also have to be met. If any of them ain't met, that's what the, the county has jurisdiction on. And then we rely on USDA to do the actual inspection and making sure all them things are done and the records are kept.
And then the last one we had was, are there any special regulations with venison with the CWD?
Okay, and I think.
With disposing the bones.
Yep, and I think you addressed that, right? It has to be to the landfill.
It has to be in the landfill.
Yep, that has to go to landfill. That can't go to the rendering plant.
Venison has to go to landfill.
Yep.
All venison bones have heads, everything, and have to go to rendering, or landfill.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, I got to ask three times. I'll ask the third and final time, any other public comment? If hearing none, we'll close this portion of meeting to the public. You guys ready to go through the criteria questions? Okay. Okay, number one, the use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. George?
Yes, be minimal traffic increase, probably five or six cars per day. County Road Forty-seven is capable of handling a traffic increase. Shouldn't really affect anything. There's no parks or schools anywhere nearby, so in the middle of a parcel, should be good.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add to question one? If not, we'll move to question two. If not, we'll move to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement in surrounding vacant properties for uses predominant area. Marvin?
Uh, no, will not. And what is it? They have thirty acres there and, uh, it's a business that's already going here. And it, uh, of this here, the butchering shop will be in the middle of that thirty acres. It's well buffered by trees, um, and what is it? The closest neighbor is a half a mile away.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add to question two? If not, we'll move to question three. The use in, the use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. John?
Well, you're gonna get inspected by the state of Minnesota on this one, uh, over in a couple of times a year, so. And we didn't hear anything from soil and water and we haven't heard, uh, and then you look at the application on page one of five, figure one. Um, it addresses everything on how all of this is gonna be handled, so, um, I, I think that sums up the answer to that question. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add to question three? The only thing I'd add is, uh, um, he's gonna put in the proper, uh, disposable areas as far as, um, disposing of the carcasses and then also with the wastewater with putting in the, the, uh, tanks. And then again, what John said, that's gets inspected through USDA and it's, uh, safeguarded that way, so. Okay. Question four, the use consistent with the zoning purposes and zoning, purpose of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Yeah, if we look through, uh, kind of our goals and objectives, um, that we had in our packet, if you read through them, where we try to, um, do as much ag as we can in egg zoning, but yet we worry about residences and all that. It's nearest residence a half a mile away. This is something that probably not gonna smell it. Nobody's gonna even know he's really doing it unless they see a trailer leave there, something like that. Um, it is an allowable use in ag. I think that's where, basically that's where it belongs. Um, it's good to see, uh, entrepreneurial people trying to do these things. I think it's also a, a big need for the area. So, um, I think when we look at it, it's allowed in in zoning ordinance and then it's also, if we read through our goals and objectives, he meets all that criteria for that. So I would have to say yes to question four. Anybody have anything to add to question four? If not, we'll move on to question five. The use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Brent?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it's in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water, uh, plan of the county. It's, um, it's an ag IUP in an egg zone. Um, he's talked about the use of the wet and dry cooler, increasing his sewer tank, um, from five hundred gallons to twenty-five hundred gallons. It's gonna increase the pumping that comes out of there. That is treated as wastewater, um, for water treatment, uh, purposes. You know, ensuring that our water plan is, uh, good. Um, he's talking about increasing his, uh, freezers and coolers, continuing to use, uh, the landfill for, um, disposal purposes. I think that's, um, ensuring the protection of the water of the county.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything to add to question five? Okay, if not, we'll move to our votes. Um, before we do, um, you're fine with the four conditions that were, yep. You guys read through the conditions. Anybody have anything else you wanna add? Okay, so we're keep in mind when we vote with these, these, uh, criteria questions that we're got these, uh, conditions in mind. Okay, so question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities and public facilities such as parks and schools. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development improvement for surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Question three, the use in the opinion of the planning commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. Myself Clint is yes. Uh, Brent?
Yes.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the use is not in, question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself Clint is yes. Okay, so it looks like here we answered all the questions in affirmative here. So, go ahead, Marv.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of commissioners with the conditions.
Okay. There's a second. George?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion maintenance, a second to, uh, recommend approval to the county board of commissioners with the four conditions. All in favor, say aye. Uh, Brent?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I, myself Clint is aye. Okay, so we'll recommend approval for this. Um, this will be heard at the June fourth, uh, commissioner meeting. So if you have any questions between now and June fourth, contact, uh, anybody at land services, the staff, and they'll help you through this. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, good luck with it. Yep.
Okay, next on our agenda. We have, uh, Adam and Caitlin Mueller, uh, one-two-one-nine-three Meadowview Drive, Little Falls. Application to rezone two parcels from residential to agriculture for the purpose of an event venue located in point of southwest quarter of northwest quarter, of northwest quarter of southwest quarter and point of southeast quarter of northwest quarter and point of southwest quarter section thirteen. Township one-twenty-nine, range thirty Pike Creek Township. Once I see the applicants come up here, please state your name for the record.
Um, Caitlin Mueller.
Okay, thank you. Darren, you ready with the staff report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application is to rezone two parcels from residential to agriculture for the purpose of continuing an event venue and ag use of the property located in section thirteen of Pike Creek Township. Section five oh eight of the Morse County Land Use Control Ordinance requires a public hearing to change the official zoning map. This is Pike Creek Township with the red dot showing the location. The application that was submitted and their site plan. Here's an aerial view of the two parcels that we're discussing. This is, uh, again, an aerial oblique view of the two. The applicant owns two parcels totaling one hundred and forty-two point nine acres with frontage on Meadowview Drive. The east parcel also has frontage on State Highway twenty-seven. The property is approximately a half mile west of the city of Little Falls. So this is, uh, figure one showing the zoning map. Um, as you can see, this area, um, is surrounded by residential zoning and is currently zoned residential with some commercial as well. The properties are currently zoned residential. Surrounding parcels are zoned residential, commercial and agriculture. Uses consists of residences, forest land, crop fields and commercial businesses. The applicant is requesting to rezone their parcels to ag. Uh, they're proposing two uses for the property. One, for the west parcel and an event venue utilizing existing dwelling. This would require an after the fact interim use permit as the property is already being utilized as a mystery dinner theater. For the east parcel, the continuance of agricultural use or cropping the farmland. The details of the event venue would be addressed with an IUP application. Tonight, we're just discussing a rezone. That's it. The purpose of the residential zoning district is to provide areas that promote, promote moderate, uh, density, uh, single-family residential development generally near adjacent to incorporated areas or other areas of the county with such levels of development. The purpose of the agricultural zoning district is to promote and protect areas which have high quality agricultural lands and are centrally rural in nature. Within this district, agricultural activities shall be given precedence over other land uses. This city of Little Falls does not have any plans to annex this area into city limits. Applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives, um, residential goal B one, uh, to promote the wise utilization of land for organized residential development with those objectives. Ag goal A one, ensure the county provides areas, uh, suitable for strong, stable agricultural industry, crop production, animal husbandry, dairy meat production, similar uses. Uh, goal A two, uh, with objective one. Local economic development, um, goal C one with objectives one and eight. Again, I won't read through these since they're in your report, but we can certainly address them, um, later on. Goal C two, objective one, two and nineteen. Hundred twenty-six notices were sent out. Two comments were received before the public hearing, both in request, or excuse me, in support of the request. Don Robinson called and has no issues with the request and Ross Whamery, um, called on behalf of Pike Creek Township and they have no issues with the request and is in support. These are your discussion questions, um, for zoning amendments, um, and that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're, before we ask your questions, just remember, we're gonna have, probably have another meeting for the interim use permit. So we don't need to ask her a ton of questions about what she wants to do with it, but, uh, but with that being said, just give us a short little rundown of what you're doing now or what you wanna do and then.
Okay. Um, so we purchased the property next to our property, um, which we are operating as Meadowview Manor, uh, which we have it as a vacation rental, Airbnb, VRBO. Um, you can look through those avenues. Um, anyways, um, in our off seasons, in the winter, we're a little bit slower and so we will host murder mystery dinners. And we, um, people can rent the space. We feed them a meal and they, it's kind of a fun thing in the area. They come in costume and act a part and it's just, it's kinda weird and kinda funny. But, um, so we've been doing that for a while and I have a food license through the county and, um, to, to serve food to them. And, um, I guess I didn't know that I wasn't allowed to under the residential. It never came up. Um, and so, yeah, we'd like to continue doing that. Um, it's not our main source of income, but it is, uh, bringing value, I think, to the community.
Okay. Guess we'll open it up to the board at this time. If you have any questions for the applicant or staff.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marv.
And maybe this is a broad question or whatever. How much additional traffic you expect to give if this goes or you, it's still too early to say anything with that?
Well, okay, so we do maybe a dozen murder mysteries a year in the last two years. Um, and each dinner we have probably brings in like, probably like seven to twelve cars in, in one night. But we do them maybe once or twice a month.
Okay, and with seven to twelve cars, how many people attend, uh, events there?
Um, up to fourteen. We have done bigger, um, events for businesses, but usually they carpool. And we might have like twenty, twenty-five people.
Okay. So the next one, you know, I look at, uh, a few weeks past, we went ahead and approved, uh, P, uh, parcels south of Little Falls on the east side of the river, uh, rural residential. And I know it's a different topic, different piece.
Okay.
And, but, uh, I'm just wondering how does the event venue align with ag and, you know, that's?
So, okay, so we can, I guess the event venue doesn't align in ag, but you're able to run an event venue under an ag zoning and that's why. Um, we were suggested to, um, put our property, that our home property into that big lump to rezone because they had said that, and we do agriculture on our property. We have hayfields and stuff. So, um, we were told to lump the two properties together because it'd be a better chance of it being approved.
That's land services told you to do that or where did?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that answers that question. Uh, thank you.
Yeah.
George?
Mr. Chairman. So I'm looking at this and I'm assuming Darren, uh, that's all, all, all the blue is residentially zoned, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm looking at this, we got a, we have a, we have a parcel that we wanna rezone ag amongst a bunch of commercial. With that being said, I guess I am pretty familiar with the property and it's all, it's all meadows and I believe that there's a creek flows through there too, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess, you know, my opinion would hardly be that it would hardly be a, a good place to build houses that someday later down the road.
We do not wanna build houses on our property.
That was just my comment on it.
Yeah.
I, I do know the property a little bit, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was kinda where I was going with this too. I was gonna ask, um, so what do you do with the, for ag? I mean, you got some hayfields. Does somebody make the hay or you just let it grow wild or what do you do?
So we have a farmer that comes in and bales it once a year.
Okay.
Um, I wouldn't say it's the super best hayfields, but it is what it is. Um, and then a lot of it is swamp, lowlands, um, hunting ground.
Yep.
Um, so it's kind of a little mix of everything.
So if, if somebody were gonna, let's say we would leave this residential. How many houses do you think you could actually build on that?
Oh, like on our property, like if we, if that was our goal?
Yeah.
Um, I would say much south of where our house is, it gets pretty soggy. So, um, the best place to build houses would be up along Meadowview Drive there, which would, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, kinda going along with what George, you could maybe fit a few in. It's just too wet. And you get up along Highway twenty-seven, there's maybe one or one lot there. I don't know if you could.
Where there's some driveway maybe.
So I just kinda piggybacking on what kinda George is looking at, the same thing that it isn't gonna be like we're, uh, wasting a spot that's, can be tons of houses in the future. You know, be, when you're gone. You don't want nothing on there, but.
Right, yeah.
Looking at it for when you're gone. It's, it's more than just you guys.
Okay.
It's just, you know, looking for the future.
Yep. And that little area is hayfield right now, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Brent, do you have any questions?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Clint, one more comment here.
Yeah, George?
I think the other two lots to the east of you, they're probably all pretty much the same as, as the piece that runs up to twenty-seven, correct?
Yes.
It's all pretty low in there?
I mean, I would think so, yeah. I think very similar to ours, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, George, we've been up in Meadowview. Is there a dry lot in there where the houses are now?
Well, the one that, one that holds in all the dirt.
Yeah.
That's me.
Yeah, he holds in a lot of dirt.
John, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, so do you have, do you, does it have to be zoned ag in order to, um, do hayfields?
No.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
So if you didn't hear that, John just asked if it had to be ag zone to make hayfields? No, it can be residential.
Right. The ag is for the purpose of the event venue. So in the future though, um, we would like to do like weddings, um, like small weddings at the house. It's like a, it's a very beautiful historic home. And so we purchased it with the intention of kind of sharing that. I don't know. It's very unique, so.
Okay. Well, I think that'll be for a different meeting that we'll have.
Yes, yes.
Um, so tonight, we're just looking to decide if we should change it from residential to the ag. Um, I just want a little bit of the history or background, what you wanna do. I just always like to ask that. But we don't wanna get too in-depth in that 'cause that'll be later on. Um, so that's good. It is a pretty big chunk. Um, so it'd be, you know, and when you looked at the map, there was a lot of residential around there, but you don't have to go very far, like right across the road and it's all ag. You know, to the south, to the west, to the north. Um, so I don't know. Sometimes people think maybe spot zoning, I think if we take the one parcel to the west of them, out of the equation, it's an ag already. So I don't know if we consider this pot, spot zoning or not. So I.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marv.
Um, and you can't do, uh, event venue, I should say, you can't. I'm, I'm asking event venue for rural residential, uh, because. I'm, I'm asking event venue for rural residential, uh, because to me, rural residential seems to be a nice transition, uh, direct from there. And, uh, my question is to Darren, you're probably the expert on that, so.
That is correct. The, uh, residential zone doesn't have the I U P allowance for an event venue. Um, that is only an ag zoning. So ag zoning is the only district, or in, that makes sense here, that would, um, allow for the use she's looking for.
Okay, and, and that's, in essence, it seems to me it's almost spot zoning and, and, and we're not supposed to be allowing that, and where do you go with this? No.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, George.
So I guess the bigger question on spot zoning is, how big is a spot zone? You know, we're looking at a hundred and forty-three acres, you know, it's not, it's, it's not like it's a little, uh, five acre lot or something like that. So I guess that's my question that I have in my head is, you know, it's, it's a fairly large tract of land.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, John.
So when we're looking at this, Darren, now, the blue that shaded in there, does that, because these parcels are broken out like that, that means half of the parcel is rural, or is that just off on the color?
Sure, over on this side?
Yes.
Yep, so, um, on my laser, so what he's, uh, speaking to is, uh, if you see on the left-hand side of, uh, two-fourteen or hundred-twentieth, um, how half a parcel or a third of the parcel is blue and the rest of it's clear. Clear is the ag zoning district, and yes, th- they are duly zoned parcels. Uh, that area, um, many, many years ago, they decided to zone, uh, it's probably the first two hundred feet, um, of that within that road is going to be residentially zoned all the way up that road. How far that goes, I'm not sure. I'm sure if we looked at the zoning map, we could, uh, certainly pull it up if you wish. That probably goes, you know, probably up to the next farm or the next township road kind of a thing. Very common, you can see it, um, on Highway twenty-seven here as well, um, uh, on the furthest west of this picture, where a good chunk of, uh, Highway twenty-seven going north is residential, and that stops and it transitions into ag. So, um, not uncommon to have duly zoned parcels when we're in close proximity to city limits.
I guess at this time, let's think a minute. Is there any public, uh, comment on this? Open up to the public. Any public comment?
Jesse Stavish, one-five-nine-nine-eight, one-hundred-and-twentieth. I'm just saying I have zero issue with it. I think anybody can make a little money, let them have their shot. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? So I got to ask three times, this will be my final ask. Is there any other public comment? If hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Okay, you guys got any more questions or discussion? So one thing here to look at is, yes, we're not, you know, they're asking to get this zoned to ag to do something, okay? It shouldn't always be for that, it should be, is it ag or not, right? Then the other part of me is, you know, we've allowed a lot of these type of things out in ag already, um, that is already zoned ag, that's a lot farther out in ag than this is, right? And we don't allow these things in rural residential, right? But we allow it in ag. Don't it make more sense to have a dinner theater close to rural residential than ag? So I'm for changing it. Let some of this stuff be around residential and see if they like it. I don't know, that's probably a harsh line or words to say, but, but when you look at it, you know, we allow, you know, okay, so we have a butcher shop. To me, that, that, that needs to be out in ag. But we have all kinds of little trinket shops, dress shops, all kinds of things out in ag already. And I don't think this is spot zoning. You know, we got, yes, it's in the middle of a bunch of blue, but you go across the road, that was all just zoned residential because it was so many miles from town they go out. We go across the road, there's some ag. If you look to the north, there's one right up where it says Green Prairie. That's kind of out, it's connected, but it's out. So I don't know, that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, you guys all got to, so, and then we got to also think, it isn't just to put what she wants to put in there. But then we think like George made the comment of how many houses we can actually put in there, unless they're going to change a lot of housing laws, you ain't going to put very many houses in this, in this piece. And it's a big chunk, so that would probably preserve some land, I think, for, uh, even though it's rural residential, there's a lot of wildlife in the area also, so, um, there's a creek that runs through. I see that the, either the applicants or the previous owners, they mine some dirt out and build some ponds in there. So, I don't know.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
Well, I agree a lot what you're saying here. And, and it's, you know, a hundred and forty-some acre chunk. That's a big chunk of property. So when you look at it that way, that doesn't seem like a spot zone. And it is a nice transition area. I'm familiar with the area and buildable area, absolutely correct. There's so little buildable area and, um, so, and, uh, I, I know we try to, in Morrison County, make it ag-friendly, and it, a, a good share of this property will be used for ag, uh, grassing and whatever like that. So with that, I, I see where you're going with this, and I don't disagree with that. I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, and then another comment also, when we get into ag, you know, there's all kinds of uses, which ag is, ag, livestock, farming, all that, right? Here'd be a piece of ag that somebody could do something else that's allowed in ag, that's really not out in the heart of it, and it ain't going to affect the feedlot or any of that type of stuff where every day we always, we, we allow some of these things out in ag, and then it could affect the feedlot someday. This will never affect the feedlot. There's never going to be a feedlot close enough. There's a chicken barn way to the north, but they'll never, will, more than likely, probably not allow anything to incringe around that area because of all the residential, so.
Mr. Chair, too, uh, the township, which is the grassroots government.
Yep.
And they're in favor of this, and, you know, and so it aligns with them, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Brent.
Just a couple of comments, more than anything here. Again, the, the township is, um, not opposed to this. Little Falls doesn't have any plans to annex, uh, this to create it into city limits. It's primarily being used agricultural, although there is a residence there. It is a substantial, uh, amount of acreage. Um, I kind of consider a spot zone more like, you know, a s- a sliver of something in the middle of, and this is more of a large acreage, um, towards the edge of. And it makes some sense, uh, to consider, um, agricultural in this area, uh, regardless of the proposed use, which we'll hear later, I guess, if it, if the board, uh, goes that way.
Yeah, so for us to sit here and just determine if it's spot zoned or not, I think, you know, we can decide what we want to do tonight, but I think the commissioner's got to see this again, and, and, um, they can, they can make the determination on that. I feel they're, uh, uh, they can definitely handle that. So, um, that's, that's why I'm kind of maybe a little bit more in favor of this, because it has to go to another, um, part of our government to get approval. And, uh, I think, uh, they see a probably a lot more of this type of things with development and things like that, so. I don't know, you guys got any more comments? Otherwise, we'll just go to the vote sheet. Okay, hearing none, we'll just, we'll vote. So we're just going to vote yes or no, if you're in favor or, or, or not for, um, recommended of approval. So myself Clint is yes. John?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to recommend approval?
Mr. Chairman, also move, make a motion to approve it from, uh, residential to agricultural zoning.
Can I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second that, uh, to move forward to the county commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to recommend approval to the board of commissioners that we, uh, rezone this from residential to agriculture. All in favor, say aye. Uh, myself is aye, John?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Okay, we'll recommend approval to the county board of commissioners. That meeting will be June fourth. If you have any questions on anything between now and then, contact Land Services, Amy or Sharon or Darren or any of the staff, and they'll help you, okay?
Okay.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you shortly, probably.
Thanks.
Okay, so, anybody want to make a motion to approve our May fourteenth minutes?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve our May fourteen minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.